I'd like to call to order our scheduled Board of Education Business Meeting at 7:11. And your hands are free to call roll. Excellent. Please do. Thank you.
Anthony Amato, Alan Brown.
Here.
John Boniudo, Gregory Kava, Michelle Gora.
Here.
James Hirschfield, Stephanie Colnickier, Jennifer Pody.
Here.
Lisa Roush, Michael Sinatra, Julie Stewart, Peter Tagley. Thanks. We've got quorum.
Thank you. Yes, we have a quorum. Our first item is Public Comment on Agenda Items. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this? Seeing some but hearing very quietness, let's move on to the Consent Agenda. We only have minutes on the Consent Agenda. If anybody would like anything removed, please speak up now. No? Good. We have therefore passed our Consent Agenda. Reports and recognition. I am not the Board's Chair, so I will not issue a report. We'll move right along to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Couple of announcements. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I do want to send our deepest appreciation to our teaching staff, who do an excellent job here in Region 12. Also, it's Nurse Appreciation Week, so to our four nurses also, who do an excellent job taking care of not only students but staff. Congratulations to Michael Gora, husband of Michelle Gora, who won the Vincent J. Riley Coach of the Year Sportsmanship Award for the Chapag Valley Ice Hockey Team. So that is a great honor, and if you've ever seen Coach Gora coach, he really deserves it. He is one patient, loving coach, believe me. So congratulations. And I just want to thank Karen Files and the staff, doing a great job on the latest newsletter that hopefully got in everyone's boxes Saturday, to remind all of our community members of the wonderful things going on in our schools, and thanking them in advance for supporting our schools. And I just want to note the beautiful tribute to Rosemary Armini on the back, which was just a loving touch for this newsletter. So that was a great job. Happy Mother's Day in advance to all the mothers out there. That's my report.
Did you cover the appointments?
Oh, I apologize. Yes, okay. We do have an appointment. Kelly Norris, School Counselor at Chapag. Very happy about that. When you meet her, you're going to see, this is a school counselor. Very energetic, very engaging, very approachable, young, and I think she's really going to be a great addition to the Chapag family. We have a field trip, just for information only. Bronx Zoo, Grade 6, is going on June 6th. And that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Costantino. Move on to the Committee Reports, starting with at advance, Michelle Gora.
Yes, we had a board meeting on last Thursday, and I just wanted to, a couple of things. One, I have this folder that I'm going to pass around. It's a recent publication that at advance put together to let everyone know about their services. It's like their own personal, their PR thing. So it kind of helps outline what they do so that you can understand. So if you want to pass that around. We also approved the preliminary budget for next year, '18-'19. It's a $28.5 million budget, and they're doing some really great work at advance. Just a lot of innovative programs and some creative ways they're working to try to help smaller districts like ours. We actually, Bob, we talked about the health insurance. At advance also got tagged. Yep, they're creating their own pool, which, you know, it'd be interesting to keep an eye on that and see how that goes. Several of the other districts that were at the meeting talked about how, you know, their experience with that. It's been great for some districts and challenging for others. So we'll see how that goes. But there are lots of the districts, smaller districts especially, talking about creating consortiums and trying to pool together to create, to have a larger body for bidding. They're working on the Chromebook one right now, which I think you sent in the information. They're looking to see if they can get better pricing if we all pool together. So whether it's health insurance or buying Chromebooks or whatever it is, they're looking at trying to help all the districts. I know Teresa has met with them before because they also look at sharing PD, you know, bringing somebody and sharing between Litchfield and ourselves or whatever it might be. So a lot of great services and programs that they offer. We also did an evaluation of Jeff Kitchen, who's the director. And it's just, I think, as a board member, sort of interesting to go through the process as a part of a different board, because I'm there with members of all of the RESCs boards, and just to kind of talk about how that works and to also, in general, talk about challenges we're seeing in our districts and different ways of overcoming those. So it was really a great meeting. Our next meeting is going to be, well, it's in June. I forget the date. But we're going to be meeting down in Danbury. That was one thing we talked about, the building that they just bought for special ed. So they, and they've put in a bid for one in Torrington as well. So the one, so a building in Danbury and a building in Torrington for offering special ed services, like outplacement, for services that we districts find hard to do in-house. So that's been growing really quickly because there was a demand. The districts told at advance, hey, this is something that we could really use. And they found the space to have it, and it's been going really well. It's a way to saving money, not having to place, you know, in a school on the other side of the state. They also have a growing program for students who've been expelled, based on the new state requirements for the hours of instruction required for expelled students. So that's unfortunately also growing, but not necessarily because more students are being expelled, but because of the state requirements for educating those students. So lots of services that they're offering, and we're going to be meeting down in the new building to see that in June. So that's, yes, Jim? It's really interesting, because it's a combination of fee for services and grants. They do, state and federal. And they, which is why I feel like, you know, I know our administration is familiar with what they do, but every time I hear about it, I kind of like want to come back. I wish I could go to an admin meeting, because they go out and get grants, and then they provide programming, and they kind of share that with the districts that sign on. So some of the things are fee for service, like they run after-school programs, and parents pay to participate. They provide transportation services for districts, where they bid on it, just like All-Star would. And so that's a fee for service. But in other cases, they get technology grants. They get, I forget, they were giving us a report. I didn't write it down, but this National Science Grant, where it's like really hard to get one, and they just got their third in two years.
Twenty-first century skills for science. We use that.
Right. But this was even like a beyond, I think it's a, it's, because they get a grant for that, but this was something else that they got another grant for. So they've got a good team of grant-writing people, and yeah, so it's a mix. It's a mix of both of those. I don't think so. I don't think so. But I know that they've been really talking about expanding their services, especially when they're talking about helping set up consortiums, like with municipalities, for example, so kind of working in that area. They were also talking about working with some private schools in the areas, but I forget in what vein. But I don't know that they get corporate sponsors. Yeah? Your mic's not on.
District is. How much is the fee? Can we, how much is the fee? Can you tell us?
Hold on just a second. I'm getting a, oh, there we go. Thank you.
I was asking how much the fee is that's paid to them.
I don't have it at this moment, but I'll get it and share it with you, either email or the next board meeting. But they're in the process of setting a fee right now, an annual fee.
Yeah, I actually don't know what the fee is. So it's under the dues, fees, memberships line, the right where we pay cave and all the others. So it's, yeah, I don't think it's exorbitant because that whole line item's not too large, but it would be good to know. We'll find out. Good question. Any?
Any more?
Any other questions?
It's funny, I was going to ask about the revenues, and I figured, no, I don't, after Jim will. And he did. Amazing.
What do you know?
If we're all set, no more questions, then we can move on to education. Mike Sinatra usually speaks on this, but he went home ill, so I've asked Teresa DeBrito, who is the administrator, who is, I don't know, we don't say, ex officia, who is the member of that committee, to let us know our status report.
Good evening, everyone. So there are two topics to share. We didn't have a quorum, so it was just Mike and I kind of dialoguing anyway, but he would have shared this with you. One exciting thing is that we are going to work with UConn, with a research professor at UConn, in regard to identifying behaviors in children and in educators that nurture giftedness and talent. So we are going to draft a letter. I met with Emily and Kathy and the teachers, and we're going to ask parents for their blessing, because they would actually have to authorize us to participate in this research. Nothing will be identifiable of any student, but there will be surveys, and there will be classroom observations, and there will be very specific trainings for the teachers that do get selected to participate and enhance what happens in the classroom. So that is just an initial overview of what we're looking at. More information to come on that, but this would happen next school year. The other topic that I was asked to research, there's a hand up, so should I just say, go ahead, Michelle, if you have a question?
What grades?
This is first through third.
Cool. Thank you.
Very young, yep. And you should also know that when they came out to visit the schools, the two comparable schools are Booth and Washington Primary. Because of the configuration at Burnham, it doesn't match the single-grade classroom that they're looking for. So they're looking at 50 schools throughout the state, and two would be ours. So this is in the infancy stages, but excited that this opportunity is here. The other piece of information is that I was asked to research school start time and the impact based on the studies that are out there for adolescents who require more sleep, and what sleep deprivation really does to a young adolescent. And there are a couple of schools in the state of Connecticut that have changed their school start time. And what I mean by that is that high school would start later, and elementary would start earlier, because they find that the younger children are very eager and energized to start, no matter what time they get up. And the older students, really, first period, they're still half asleep. Second period, they're starting to wake up. So we're looking at that research, and there would be further dialogue. This is just looking at the information at this point. We're not saying that that's going to happen in the district, but the committee has asked for that information. So those are the two highlights. Any other questions? Yes, Jim?
Teresa, do you, have you talked to the PTOs about that idea?
That would be part of the process. That would be part of the process. It would be all the PTOs. But like I said, they're just, we're just at the infancy stages of the idea surfacing at the committee level. But absolutely, this would be a one- to two-year process to get stakeholder input. That would be critical.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the first topic, I was just a little confused. For the UConn research, you said, "Research on children and educators on behaviors that nurture gifted and talented students." So obviously, we're looking at educators' behaviors that nurture. You don't mean children's behavior that nurture too? Do you mean like identifying children?
It's two, we can come at it from two angles. So there are certain behaviors that students exhibit that could be potential that the adults might not even be aware of. So yes, it is identifying what those behaviors are, but at the same time, also looking at adult behavior that can certainly nurture or prevent that growth and talent from fruition.
So you did mean nurturing on the educator's side and identification on the child's side?
Correct. Correct. And it would enhance instruction for all. That's the end result that we would be looking at. So more to come.
Good, good. Glad we're moving on. Anyone else? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Facilities. Greg.
Facilities is going to be meeting, if we don't have another emergency building committee meeting or something, is going to be meeting later this month. We are continuing to work through the capital plan and its implications for capital planning at the town level and, of course, by the board. And we continue to look at the items that were originally hoped to be dealt with in the AgSTEM project, but which have fallen off of that project. For example, the tennis courts. We're considering a couple of alternatives for those and some other projects around the site. So that's more or less what Facilities is up to. We'll have a little bit better report after our next meeting.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you. Finance. Michelle.
Yes, we met directly before this meeting. Also, before I talk about that meeting, I just wanted to say that Bob and I met with the Board of Finance in Bridgewater last week Wednesday. They had questions for us regarding AgSTEM and the, mostly about the financing of that, and put together a really comprehensive list of questions. And Bob did a wonderful job getting prepared for that, had a lot of handouts, and the meeting went really well, I think. It was, yeah, it was really informative. We spent, we were there for almost two hours. We went through all of the, you know, details about the operating of the program and how that works, and how that's going to be reflected on the budget and everything. And we went through a lot of information about the bonding and bands and current interest rates, and what we were projecting the interest rates to be, and when the state pays, and how that all works. And Bob had a lot of good handouts. So it was, I think it was, hopefully, they found it helpful, and I thought it was a good meeting. So I'm glad that they reached out and did that, because it's really important that everyone understands moving forward, how this is going to work, the nuts and bolts of the monies going in and out. And I have, I have met with the Boards of Finance in Roxbury and in Washington, but we didn't have a workshop quite like this, so maybe we'll do that in the future. So that was, that was last week. Tonight, we had our regular meeting, went through the monthly reports. Everything is looking, is tracking to what is expected. We have 1% left, which is pretty normal for this time of year. And there was really nothing new or unexpected in this month's financials. Then we also just went over what we're going to be talking about in a couple of weeks. We will be meeting with Wells Fargo, who manages our pension, to just get an update on the performance of those funds and advice about future. And we will be meeting with Phoenix Advisors, Barry Bernabi, who advises us on bonds. He'll go over sort of the latest on bond, the bond interest rates, but also the different, there are just so many different ways that this can happen. When you take a band, which is the bond anticipation, notice, you can, note, you can take that for any, you know, well, not any length of time. What is the limit, Bob? Five years?
One year, but you could roll it eight times.
You can roll it eight times? So the tricky part is figuring out, you want to lock in your bond at the lowest rate, but you don't want to borrow it before you need it. So it's just a game of figuring out, how long can I wait? But are the interest rates moving up? Would it be cheaper to, you know, would it be better in the long run to lock in now? Which we've all faced that with homeowners, you know, with your mortgage. If you do a fixed, long-term, you know what it is forever, but if you do a variable, it's less, but then you're subject to interest rates rising, so you have to kind of watch the market. So that's what he's going to talk to us about and kind of go over some different options. And that's just a fluid, it's always changing. So we will definitely keep the board appraised of, as we get closer to the time, you know, what is being advised at that moment. So that meeting is happening May 23rd, in a couple of weeks.
What time?
4:30.
4:30, Central Office. Any questions? All right?
Okay. Long-range planning, we have, as usual, not met, but I have a feeling we're going to be able to do some long-range planning pretty soon. So we'll keep you posted. Negotiations, Greg.
We are in the process of setting up the ground rules in our first meeting dates for the two unions. One represents our custodians and cafeteria workers, and the other union represents our paraprofessionals and secretaries, clerical personnel other than the secretaries of the Central Office. So we haven't started those yet. We'll probably start them shortly.
And Michelle, again, policies.
Yes, so we met last month. We have one new policy on our agenda for first reading. We have several policies that we have been carrying forward. The administration is working on them, one that the nurse is working on. So we've been working on several that are, have come to us because either laws have changed or something required adjusting. And so that, we spent a fair amount, so we're getting updated on those, but we do have one new policy for tonight. That's it.
Coming up. Thank you. New business and updates, which is basically the AgSTEM update. Finances from Bob.
Yeah, the committee met tonight. What we spent to date is $1,102,94. There were bills presented to the office for $426,805. At this point, I believe the committee hasn't taken action on it, but has pushed it to the next agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. We'll take action on it on next Monday night.
Right. So when that action takes place, if they are all approved, it would increase the paid, including that, I call that pending, up to $1,529,000. So that's where we stand, and I think that's the point where I left the meeting, to attend the finance meeting. Is there anything else, Greg?
Not on finances. We didn't approve those. We just couldn't get to them.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, Greg.
Well, as you can see from the financial report, we have reached a stage at which we are complete with, complete through schematic and design development. We are about halfway through construction documents phase, and after that phase, we go out and bid, we start our bidding process. So we're moving along. We're looking at the design development estimate, which is, not surprisingly, a little bit over where we expected it would be, primarily, you know, when you consider that the state took 18 months to act on the project, you have some escalated costs. When you consider that the United States has been threatening to slap tariffs on steel, which I am told by our estimators has resulted in an increase in steel prices ahead of the potential impacts of the tariffs. So when this kind of thing happens, and you think, oh, this is good, we're getting all charged up about it, just remember that it can have an impact on any construction project done anywhere, including ours. So we're looking at things like that. We're looking at the fact that we've added a couple of things to the scope of the project that we didn't have in there before. The electric line to the building needs to be replaced. We could limp along with it as is, but the minute we create a new transformer in order to add the AgSTEM portions online, we're forced to replace that. That is eligible for 80% reimbursement by the state. The problem is, is that as the costs go up and exceed what the state's willing to fund, that may be difficult. But so we asked our engineers and our estimators to come up with a list of value engineering solutions in order to keep the budget online, and they came up with a list that totals more than the variance in the budget. So by the time we're done, so the question is, will we be able to accept all of those? Probably not. Some of them we may not want to do. Some of them we may have other reasons for not doing them. But we'll keep it pretty close. We, you know, we've been humming along. We may go in with the things slightly over, but we are also carrying over $4 million of contingencies in this budget for escalations, for possible design changes and other things, that if the contingencies are not realized, then that money will come back in. So even if we were running at a deficit, we would be, we'd be okay in the ultimate scheme of the thing. But that's where we are. We're pushing through those numbers. I'll have a more full report when we complete it. There were still some things, some new things that came in that they have not estimated yet, that will add additional monies back into our project that we didn't otherwise have before. So, you know, we're working, we're working on all those, and we will, we will keep it going. But now's where we're sharpening the pencils. Then it will be put out to bid, and until it's put out to bid, we won't know what the real costs are and what the real contingencies are. Bob, you had something to add?
Yeah, there is a bid out now that's on the street for that Phase 1, for the demolition portion of it. And that's due back, I think, next week, so you might have an indication of what that portion of the project would cost you.
That's right. We will have-
That's a small piece of the overall.
Yeah, it's a small piece of the overall project, but it's, it's the first piece. So it'll give us the first idea of where the market, what the market will bear in terms of costs for the project, the demolition and some of the abatement, environmental abatement and what's not, the stuff that we're talking about doing. So that's, that piece is out on the street, and we'll, as Bob says, we'll know shortly where that one is. But this is, this is where the, you know, this is where you have to keep the strong knees, because as you put things out to bid, you find out what they really cost. Until you bid them, you don't know. You're giving it your best guess in today's dollars. But they have continued to carry very large contingencies for, to cover increases in costs. And in fact, they increased the percentage of the contingencies from what it originally was because of these steel tariff and other, you know, roilings in the market. So instead of holding a contingency, I think they originally planned on 4% per year escalation. They've upped it to 6. And so they're carrying a larger contingency for those things, just in case, you know, things don't settle down and they continue to be roiled. So that's where they are.
Michelle.
When do you expect to go out to bid for the design?
Well, we had hoped to go out to bid sometime in June, June into July. That's probably where we are, but, you know, there's a few things that may be holding us up, so we may be a little bit later than we originally wanted to be.
Do you have a sense of how that process, the timing on that, like, because it's a big project? How long do you need to give people to put together a bid to come back? Like, how long is that standing out there?
Usually a matter of a couple of weeks. It's not a two, three weeks. It's not a large, long process. I just don't know, because of the little complexity level of this one, it may make it take longer. Bob, what are your thoughts?
Typically, there is a period where you bid it, but then you have the tail end of it, where there's a lot of analysis that goes into that before you could do, you know, actually, say we have reliable bidders. It should be about six weeks in total, between the bidding portion, the analyzing of it, vetting the people that are there, bringing that to the building committee so they can bless off on it, and then we'll have some solid numbers.
I mean, I would guess, because ONG does so much construction, especially school construction, that they probably know a lot of the bidders and know their capabilities because they've dealt with them before. And then there'll be some that they'll have to investigate and try to figure out how close those bids really are to what the project is and whether they can get them done. But because they are giving a guaranteed price to us, where if we, if the cost falls below that price, we get the savings. If the cost goes above that price, they eat it. Well, there may be a few- Uh, well, there may be a few exceptions for certain kinds of changes, but by and large, that's the way a guaranteed contract works. And because of that, they're gonna wanna make sure that they have contractors whose bids are solid and that they can feel that they're qualified to complete the work because they're kind of on the hook, uh, for that, so.
Right. Thank you.
Do you mean, uh, guaranteed minimum allocation?
Guaranteed minimum price is what it is.
That's, that can be dangerous sometimes. I guess unless ONG really is taking that under their consideration because then you end up with, if you're, if they're forced to stay there and contingencies or everything else rises, then they have to start cutting or changing material quality in order to make the-
No, actually, that's not, that's not really the way it works. You see, what it is, is you put the job out to bid, and that's, that's when you give your guarantee. It's based on the bids that have been received. So what, what, once you, once you sign this up and have the contracts, you've got a, a high degree, you know, if you vetted those contracts properly, you've got a high degree of confidence. That's how much it's gonna cost. So it's, it's, it's not rocket science, but they do build in some healthy contingencies into their own planning and into their own price in case things go sideways. And look, they've done this before. This isn't the first rodeo. So they've been out there doing this all over the state for a long, all over actually the region for a long time. And, um, I'm confident they'll, they'll be able to cover those issues.
Now, uh, remind me of the timeline. You, originally, we wanted to break ground, um, August? Is that right?
Originally, we were planning on, um, well, we're, we're, we're actually planning on breaking ground in terms of demolition work and remediation as soon as school closed.
Right, in, in July.
June.
Into June, right.
Uh, the end of June. Um, hopefully, there won't be any more snow days this year. I'm, I'm not taking that for granted because of this crazy weather we've had, but, uh, so that was originally that. We were thinking that we would actually start construction on the new additions and on the interior renovations, the actual building work, as opposed to the tearing down and
Right, right.
Getting the site-ready work. Um, we thought we'd actually be starting that around October 1st.
October, I remember there was an October, and that was-
And, and that's when you actually start the construction work is around October 1st.
Okay, so in other words-
Completion of most of it, uh, expected by, um-
August of the following year and then some more done in about October of the following year. So it's about 12 months.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's actually a nine-month construction project, um, and it's, it's, it's a little longer for certain aspects of it.
Right, right.
Uh, the greenhouse and some of the things, and two of the labs on the southern end of the building will take a little bit longer.
Take a little longer. So, all right, so with, uh, October start, I was confused for a second because I remember there was a, uh, an August in there somewhere, but that's at the other end. We still are safe then as far as six weeks prior to that engagement? The bid, which you said was June, but now might be mid-July, I guess, going out to bid?
No, I think it's prob, it's probably, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's a couple of weeks later than we originally anticipated, but probably in June, July, in that period of time.
But that's what I mean, when you say that, it was like first week of July, middle of July?
I don't know. I, I have to look at the schedule.
That really depends on the state giving us the letter that they're satisfied at that point, and they give us the document to say, you can now go to bid.
Right.
So, uh, they get everything in order. We schedule the meeting up at the state. We get the letter back, and at that point, you could go out to bid. But the, by that point, all the documents are ready
Right.
to go. I mean, we're not preparing anything at that point.
So, so when do you anticipate potentially the latest that you would get that letter from the state saying?
It's hard to say.
We, we're not that far along yet.
We're not.
Well, I'm, I'm just worried about keeping the timeline and the space in there for the milestone of being able to start construction.
We are too. We are too, but we don't have every piece of information we need to give you that answer. Unfortunately, it's taking, you know, we are a little bit behind where we'd like to be. We're not manifestly behind, but we're, you know, we've, we've had a couple of little bumps in the road over the course of this. You know, we had some issues related to the contract that we had to work out with the architect and some of the work that had to be re, redone. So we've had a couple of little bumps like that. So I'm not, I, I have not seen a new set of dates that has adjusted it, anything different than the last set you got.
Okay, well, that's good. That's the kind of reassurance I was looking for.
I want you to be prepared, though, that there probably will be some dates that will move, and they will try to make it up throughout the course of the project so that we end up with substantial delivery, you know, of what is, of the amount that's necessary, complete, ready to use before the school year opens for 2019.
Hmm.
The 2019, 2020 school year, same school year we've been talking about.
Right, good.
And some of the hard work that took place tonight is gonna get melded into that design document and the bid document. So those things all settle themselves out. So they left us tonight, and they're gonna have to rework a few things into that and add some, uh, alternates to this bid. So in the event that we get good pricing, we pick up some of the things that we can because you can't go back to the state again.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to keep as, you know, we're, we're hoping some of the things that we've kind of added to this program because they became things impacted by AgSTEM, we're hoping to keep some of those in the program. We may or may not, depending on where the all final price comes down. But the idea is, is that we're working toward a, a, you know, a project that, that makes sense, works, and we can afford. You know, it falls within our budget guidelines. That's what we're trying to do. And we're, we're not far enough along for me to tell you we're there, but we're far enough along for me to tell you we're working hard and we're, you know, we're getting close.
Any other questions for these, uh, guys in the hard hats?
No, thank you, Greg, for your time.
It's Greg's hard work, not mine.
Uh, right, so, um, policies. We have one. Michelle?
All right. Um, policy for tonight, it's a first reading of 3542.43 food service charging. Um, you'll notice if you opened the, uh, electronic copy that was sent to you, there's no highlighting because this is a brand-new policy. This is mandated, um, by new, um, state legislation. This, uh, policy really talks about, I mean, the main, uh, impetus behind this is talking about, um, students being able to charge lunches. Um, and it sort of defines, if, if they don't have money with them. And it sort of defines how long they're allowed to do that. And at some point, um, they will be offered an alternate meal, which can be determined by the cafeteria manager. Um, sets up some definitions for what exactly an alternate meal is, um, uh, and what delinquent debt is considered and how long that can be carried forward. Um, before bringing this policy to the board, uh, the business office had a chance to take a look at it. And, um, you'll notice at the end of the policy, it, it, uh, references all of the different, uh, state statutes that this is in reference to. So, anyone?
And the cafeteria took a look at it too, didn't they?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, well.
Make that clear. Jim?
I mean, so this is now required by state law?
Yep.
I'll move that we approve 3542.43 food service charging for first pol, first reading of the board.
Second? Second from Jen? Any, uh, further discussion? Or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hands. Get that? Uh, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now, our, um, our last agenda item, um, we, uh, will, uh, run away to an executive session to discuss an administrative matter. May I have a motion to go into executive session, please? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, oh, second. Well, I think Stephanie had second.
Sure.
And, uh, that will be it. We will worry about adjourning later. Um, I think we've been pretty quick. Can we go right in? We don't need a break in between, do we?
Should we take a vote on the motion?
Oh, suck.
Thanks, Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good catch.
I can imagine these guys. Greg, all in favor? Executive session? I guess we're good. See, I was, I was assuming.